Yeah.
Yes, she is.
Okay. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Shelton Board of Education Special Meeting. It is our Budget Workshop number one. Today is Wednesday, January eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, and it is six oh seven P. M. All right. May we have a call to order, please? Jim Fien.
Here.
Alvaro Rosma. Here. Kate Koutas. Here. Diana Meyer. She will be coming. Patty Newman. Here. James Rosetti.
Here.
Carl Grizzo.
Here.
Amy Romano. She will be coming. Kathy Ellis. She will be coming. Kathy, she's here. And the minutes will also reflect on attendance. Todd Heffelfinger, Cal Conozzo, and Ken Serman. Okay. All right. Please rise for the Clutch of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda for someone, ma'am chair? Okay. Motion made by Kate Koutas, second.
I would second.
Okay. Any discussion, all in favor, aye. Uh, opposed, extensions, motion varies. Um, all right. Agenda items. Okay. I guess I turn this over to you, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
So, welcome, everyone, for another budget season in the Shelton Public School System. So, um, our intent tonight, administration would like to review just the process, um, by city charter, so we can remind us all of the steps that we need to do relative to the budget. Um, I want to just review and remind the board of, um, our achievements and goals, um, as a school system that we work for to sustain, you know, with the budget. Um, and then some of the things that we are going to approach, um, and difficult challenges that we will face regarding the budget. And after I kind of talk about a few of the procedures and policies and goals, um, I've asked Todd to basically do, um, what he calls a waterfall, as I've learned the term, um, where it's going to be just, uh, just like last year, where we're going to go through some of the, um, obligations within our budget and commitments that we have to do, such as contractual obligations and such, just to kind of give us an idea of a baseline of where we would, where we would be if we were status quo on this year's budget, moving it towards next year and meeting our obligations. So, um, I want to begin and just kind of go over the, the budget process itself. Um, if you recall, the members of the board who were, who were with us at the time, um, we did have, uh, that procedural audit that was done by Joe Santafanti. Um, his recommendation was that we stick to the same process by which we do, you know, in implementing the budget. Um, that process was established with Todd and I. Um, so the same things that, and the procedures that we did last year is how we're going to follow. So, we're, we're going based on the recommendations of the auditor themselves and following that. By city charter, um, this board is obligated to submit, uh, a record, a voted upon budget, approved budget by the Board of Ed to the city, um, on February fifteenth. We have set up, uh, numerous budget workshops to get us there, um, with some, well, I call it buffer budget workshops in the events that we needed to deliberate longer, so we can meet our obligation with the city. As we are all familiar with and know, um, it doesn't stop for us on the fifteenth. This is just the first step of a long process that'll take us till May. And in some senses, this is kind of like the, this should be one of our easier process in the budget in advocating for our school system as, as a Board of Education and just making those decisions of what we want to send forth to the city. Um, after we give the budget on, on February fifteenth, uh, within the month, the mayor then presents to the city his recommended budget, um, after which time, the mayor's recommended budget then goes for public comment to the alderman. The alderman take that public comment, um, the Board of Appropriations and Taxation will review the budget, make their recommendations, send it to the Aldermatic Board. The Aldermatic Board will meet with us. They'll meet with all departments within the city, me being one of them. We will give our presentation based on our needs relative to the, um, mayor's recommended budget. Uh, they will have an open public comment for the Board of Aldermen to hear from the taxpayers and the public at large. And then they will set the mill rate, um, I don't know the date off the top of my head, but it's sometime, um, by charter, uh, in the latter half of May. So, once that is determined, um, it comes to us. Um, and at that point, we will need to make a decision based on any kind of, uh, rectifying differences based on the city setting the budget and what we've requested. Um, so it will take us till June, um, to have an effective working budget by July first for next year, um, but tonight's where it starts. I am very encouraged, though, because I've been working with this board for four years. This board has successfully, you know, produced a budget that's in the best interest of the school system. Um, we have experience on this board, and I, I am very confident that, you know, we as a Board of Education will collaborate, um, in the best interest of our school system and putting that recommendation forward.
You know what I think?
What do you think?
Everybody should put in three dollars, and we can, we can, we can get a mega millions ticket, and maybe we can win one, one point something billion dollars. That would be a great help to the, to the school system.
Definitely.
And before you, before, before you continue, I just want, I'm sorry, I forgot to introduce to everybody our newest board member, Jim Fien, over there. You're on YouTube over there. And, um, and we welcome Jim, and he brings a lot of, um, a lot of, a lot of skills to our board. He came from, if you read, there was a nice article on paper today, so, um, we welcome you, and we look for your help in finding millions of dollars we might need.
I have my three dollars, Madam Chair.
You have your three dollars?
Ready to go.
There you go.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Um, so, while I'd like to pass this out, do you pass that now, please? Um, during the discussion, I started to pass, I was to pass out this handout. This is a breakdown of our budget workshops. We, we have six budget workshops scheduled. I worked with administration to determine what topics would be discussed at what budget workshop. And as you can see, you know, the first one tonight is basically reviewing the process, talking about the rollover costs. Um, next week will be facilities and technology, and I will have both, um, Glenn Newman and John Calhoun here to talk about their budgets, um, and their needs. Um, that aspect of our work in collaboration with the city, many of those particular issues have been an offset to the, the Board of Education's budget and have been managed through the city as capital projects. So, um, if we can work with the city on that piece as well, that would be great, and we'll have a further, deeper dive when we meet again at Budget Workshop number two. Uh, number three is where we'll talk about staffing and special education. Number four, we're going to talk about teaching and learning curriculum issues and athletics. Um, and number five is where, um, I would like to propose a recommended budget for consideration for the board. Um, this is the same timeline, um, that we did last year. We were able to complete a recommended budget within five budget workshops. Of course, we have a sixth workshop if necessary, and it is scheduled on the date. Um, it brings us to February ninth if we, if, if needed, if we need to have extended time for that. Um, but in an effort to meet our obligations to the city by February fifteenth, um, that February ninth has to be a hard date if needed, so that administration has the ability to put all the paperwork associated with that budget request in the city's hands, um, six days later, so.
Uh, question.
Yes.
You came to me from that weather. Are we going to plan for the Zoom or decide?
So, we, so we had a conversation with that, because, uh, I know there was a consensus taken as to whether these meetings would be virtual or in person. Um, people, many people didn't mind either way. There were some people wanting to have it in person. I did speak to the board chair, and in the event that they didn't include whether, we're just going to go virtual. So, it's the easiest way, so we don't have to miss a date. Um, everyone has their laptop. Mr. Fien received his laptop this evening, so we have the ability to just do that and continue this process moving forward. Okay? Um, with that, I, I just want to remind, I did speak to, to the chair. Yes, sir.
What if someone can make, they want to, like, one of our board members, we're going to provide a capability, I just, but.
If a board member cannot?
Cannot be present.
Oh, cannot be present here?
Yeah.
So, I, I'm just going to speak to past practice. We haven't had this issue since I've been superintendent, but my association with the board, we have had board members attend board meetings via phone or, or other means. So, I would imagine that that's still, I'm, I'm turning to you as the chair, that, that's still a viable option for.
I think it was more beneficial when they were able to do Zoom or something. Remember when Mandy was traveling? And she was on a screen? I think it's easier to see what's happening and hear what's happening.
Was that like FaceTime or was that?
FaceTime or something, whatever those.
Well, and again, it doesn't have to be a phone. We have the capability to set up a laptop and have a person.
Cause I did talk to him, and it's so hard to hear.
Yeah. We could do, I, we just need to know ahead of time so that we can have the proper equipment present when that happens.
Why, you're going to Florida, Jim?
Yeah. What's Jim planning? He's grinning.
He's going somewhere. He's going somewhere because he's.
Well, uh, this was last year, I was out.
You were? You were out of the country.
Out of the country?
I didn't, you meant, I was.
Okay.
We didn't know, Jim.
So, so either way, um, if, if, if there's any board member who, now that we have these dates set and know they are going to be away during that time, if they contact me, we will make sure the tech center has a setup so that you can participate in the meeting if you're able to, based on the location.
Well, I don't know if that's my word.
They let you back in the country? They let you back in this country after you got out?
Want to get out, want to get in.
All right, let's stay in, let's stay in.
Wait, you have a question?
Madam Chair, through you, uh, to Ken. Um, I will be out next week, uh, be out of the country, so I would definitely need to take, uh, advantage of that.
Okay. So, we'll set up a Zoom link and then provide that to you.
Thank you, sir.
Can I come?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I come?
You can get in the luggage. You can come.
I'm, I already got there. I'm in the luggage.
You're in the luggage?
So, in, in
You don't want to.
Again, in following the perche, the procedures that we established for these budget workshops and in speaking with the chair in terms of with that, we are going to continue, um, what was a, what was initially proposed as that these meetings will go for two hours, for the hard stop for two hours, since we have a lot of work to do. We don't have, you know, we don't plan to go beyond the two hours in the digital workshop, especially since we have a sixth one that's open if necessary. Um, to help facilitate that process and in providing you with this document of what topics are there, um, it would be very helpful for administration if we had questions relative to the topics in advance. All right? Um, that just helps us be prepared to answer them. You know, we may be asked a question that we'd have to research, um, and then get back to you the next week, and then it would be off topic because we're answering a topic from the previous week.
Can I point out for the other board members that the Wednesday, the eighteenth was the nineteenth. I picked up on that Friday in case anybody else didn't notice that. Originally, the original schedule you gave back in December, but had a meeting on Thursday, the nineteenth.
Oh, no, we just changed it. We changed it last week.
But in case anybody else didn't pick that up, it was changed, and they already wrote it down. Maybe show me, it would take long days.
Um, sorry, just want to get, I tried to call back. So, if we can get, and I know sometimes, um, questions may be related to, well, can I have information on facilities and technology, so I know what questions to ask? What I want to refer to the board to is our working budget that we currently have. We have a, a finance report given out every month, and that's the current status of what we're doing expenditures on relative to those particular accounts. Since we're setting the budget, you can review the finance, and then if you have questions, you can bring that to that particular. I mean, our, our, um, action as administration is to hear, um, what the board's decisions would be, uh, based on recommendations, so we can put together a budget. Uh, and we can't do that without getting your feedback, and we want to hear your feedback and be able to answer your questions. Based on, if you remember, we did this whole process virtual last year. Um, when we did do it virtual, it allowed us to, um, present on a screen working live documents. Um, our intent, as we get closer to finalizing the recommended budget, is to have a live document like we've done in the past. It's easier for Todd if someone says, well, what if we eliminated this? What would that look like? He can type in the number, the spreadsheet corrects itself, and it kind of gives that. We intend to do that. We will project that in this room for the general public to see. My recommendation for board members to get a good glimpse of that is bring your laptop to the meeting. If you bring your laptop to the meeting, you can open up your laptop, and you can follow Todd along and have a nice view and screen of the work that's out.
Yeah. Much easier.
Okay. So, so those are the general, um, ground rules, um, norms for the meeting that we want to go over. I just want to remind the board, and I don't want to take much time of it because I know you're all well aware of it. You know, the goals that the Board of Education has, you know, we have our goals, our mission statement for the Board of Education. It is known as the mission of the graduate. I presented it to the board, and we've talked about it. It's been publicized all over our district. It talks about the work that we do for all of our students in a comprehensive school system, K through twelve. There are three goals, three hardline goals for the Board of Education. They are focused on academic achievement, social well-being, and family engagement. So, as you are making decisions about the budget, I ask you as a board to keep those three goals in mind. If we want to meet the goals of the Board of Education of having, you know, fair academic achievement, um, for our students, social well-being for our students, and family community engagement for our community and students at large, then we need to look at the decisions that we're making. The decisions and, and why these three different goals are important, because we talk about what happens in the classroom. We talk about instruction all the time, and that is very important. But there are also other budget aspects that will be impacting the other three goals, such as, you know, um, counselors in the school system, you know, and how that helps with the social well-being. Even when we talk about family engagement, we talk about what we offer our students relative to our school system in the form of extracurricular activities, athletics. These are all things that build a community, but also balance social, emotional well-being. You know, kids, our kids enjoy being a part of the community, so we want to make sure that we can offer them the best one that we can. Um, we have done exceptionally well as a board and as a school system on the money that has been allocated through us, through the city. I know I've talked to the board about this. I will be speaking again at the monthly meetings so the public can hear it. We were just recently recognized as four of our schools of schools of distinction. This past year, after ten years, the high school finally received me ask accreditation, you know? Um, we also, and I know I just did it in communication to the board, received our audit back from the city auditors with zero exceptions in terms of the processes and transactions that we're doing with the, you know? And that speaks to our effort to be collaborative with the city. The city has always asked us to be transparent. The city has asked us to always communicate, you know? Um, and clearly, by the steps of the city's auditors, we are meeting the needs of what they need to do. Um, as well, another thing that we've done, by request of the city, in the best interest of our taxpayers and the best interest of, um, the Board of Education's budget, we've negotiated these past contracts, um, with, at, or below the state averages in terms of what we're paying for these contracts. Some of the contractors, contracts, um, took longer deliberations than others. Um, but even in my communication, um, with John Englace, the president of the Aldermatic Board, who was part of this on the process, he is very pleased, and in my speaking with the mayor, very pleased, um, with the turnout that we've done in our contractual, um, union bargaining contracts. So, all these efforts are made so that we can be fiscally responsible, and we can provide our taxpayers and our community the best education we can. So, there is where it comes now with the hard decisions of actually looking at the budget. And one of the biggest things that we're going to be up against, as I've been saying for the past two years, here we are, folks, we're staring over the financial cliff. You know, we have been able to supplement our budget, um, for the past two years based on the federal government grants that we have received to help sustain our school system. With the assistance of the city and these federal grants, um, in the time that I have been superintendent of schools, we have had zero layoffs. We have not eliminated a single job in, in the school system, which is a, which is a plus for, for our school system. Whereas, and where we get the staffing, I'll show you the data, where we've made significant cuts in the past. Um, and I think the first budget meeting of this elected board as a whole was one of the hardest decisions and one of the largest cuts that you ever made to staff, which averaged somewhere around twenty-four staff members in one year. Um, but we have done well fiscally for the past two years, but now it's time where we need to make some really hard decisions because that subsidy of grant money ends June thirtieth. So, um, we're going to be going through all of that, and I've been asked Todd to kind of talk about and demonstrate what those fiscal obligations would look like. Now, this is the teacher that I'm going to say before Todd gives his handout. I know when Todd gives his handout, from my years in the classroom, that every one of you is automatically going to look to the bottom of the page to see what that number is. All right? And it's going to have some sticker shock when you see what that number is. All right? I would like to emphasize with every board member in this room, and I cannot emphasize this enough, what we are presenting to you tonight is not the recommended budget for the Board of Education or the recommendation of the superintendent. All right? We are just trying to establish a baseline. So, nowhere, I'm hoping in our collaborative relationship with the city, should I receive a text message from our mayor tomorrow to say, Ken, are you nuts that you're presenting this percentage for the Board of Ed? Because we shouldn't be presenting that information to the mayor because that's not the Board of Ed's recommended budget. It is a working document. Our job, together as a Board of Education and administration, is to say, this is our baseline. And then all these five workshops to follow is working on, okay, let's take this out, let's put this in, let's do this. And as you know, and we talked about that live working documented, you'll see that number shrink in some areas, grow in the other. But I think for the idea of what this financial cliff means, and it's not only the financial cliff, but also, as we've experienced and talked about in our finance meetings, um, the, the cost, the economic cost that are rising, utilities, all the, that we have to cover, that we must, as administration, present to the board the reality of, this is what it looks like to sustain the current budget. All right? Our job as administration and what we intend to do in subsequent workshops is to talk about, um, some ways that we can make cuts within the, the number, fiscal cuts, and still maintain services. So, we will talk about options that we can consider, other grants that we can go upon, as well as ideas that we can present to the city on how we can make that number most agreeable to this board, to the Aldermatic Board, and the taxpayers. Okay? But like I said, we just want to initially give that number out to start that discussion as we move forward for future, um, budget workshops. So, what, what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask Todd to kind of show us through the waterfall, and then when Todd is done, I'll have some closing remarks based on what he's going to present, and then we're open for any questions that may be made. Correct. Yep.
The baseline.
Yep. But you need to understand something. It's not just a rollover. What, what I've asked Todd to include is everything that we've paid through federal grant money for the past year, please include that in the rollover. So, so what you're seeing is reflective of everything that we've sustained this year that will, that will have to be taken up by the board in the general budget unless we decide to alleviate that, cut that, right?
They, so it will be marked on the document as?
Well, why don't we have Todd pass out the document, and then he can discuss it?
So, it's just to keep what we have now?
It, it is. It's to maintain current. Yep. Todd?
Okay. To re, to reiterate what Ken just said, I'm using the same format and structure that I did last year. I had excellent feedback from both the board here and also from City Hall. So, we're going to start with our baseline of our budget. That's this year's approximately seventy-five million. Then you're going to see a line item by line item by line item with a dollar amount, which will then be aggregated together, and you'll find the, the bottom number in terms of dollars and in terms of percent. Okay? So, it's going to be the financial walk or the financial waterfall of each and every item. I've identified it very easily, like we did last year on the screen and through Zoom, so it's going to be the same exact look on the tool. Uh, this here has got a few extra items on it that Ken just mentioned. Again, as the grant money is coming to an end, I tried to make sure I highlighted it very well with the way I entitled each line item for you, so you can see what it is. But essentially, you're going to get the same thing here that we did a year ago. And then, so this is for Budget Workshop number one. This is basically where we are, and to keep things consistent, with one exception. Budget Workshop number three is Special Ed, so there's nothing on here that's Special Ed because Special Ed has a whole different conversation amongst it. Okay? But this is the contractual obligations we have. Uh, prices have increased for utilities and such, so we're going to do this walk here. Okay? As Ken said, this is our workshop to work amongst ourselves. This isn't the final offering to the city, but this is our starting conversation.
And I just want to, as Todd's passing it out, to speak to the Special Ed piece. Um, as we know, last year, you know, the Aldermatic Board voted to supplement Special Ed costs. So, before we talk about what our Special Ed costs are, we need to continue to have, have that conversation to see where we are. Kind of solidify, does the board need to pick up that cost? Is that going to be a cost that the aldermen are going to cover? So, that's why there's no number in Special Ed as of yet.
Well, he's able to tell any access to the board. Yeah. And it's going to be, it's going to be over the record.
It's going to be over the record.
Yeah.
I have to go all the way down to the bottom.
You may not, you may not want to.
Just want to show you real quick. Uh, I ended up finding out whether I, um, the person that this revealed a tall story. So, this financial walk, tall story, from the bottom left corner, I did a quick index of what a one percent increase is, a two percent increase, a three percent increase, so you have a dollar walk percentage increase. Okay? So, we're going to start just like we did last year. Our current budget is seventy-five million, nine thousand thirty-seven dollars. As Carol has said, we've done some heavy lifting on contract renegotiations and increases. That being said, the two top lines are the most important. So, the certified staff line is going up one point four eight million. One point four eight million. The non-certified staff contractual increase is two hundred eighteen thousand. The third line item, and I chose to put it here because we're talking about head count, teacher, uh, non-teacher, et cetera. We currently have an expenditure of six hundred forty-five thousand, eight hundred twenty-five dollars, which the ARP grant has covered. So, like Jim and folks, you guys were asking, so for this current year, paying approximately eight people out of the ARP grant for a total of six hundred forty-five thousand, eight hundred twenty-five dollars. So, again, to repeat, the first three lines is a contractual increase for certified staff. That's the contractual percentage increase. Number two, that's the contractual percentage increase in dollars. The third one is, since these folks are being paid off of the current ARP grant at six hundred forty-five thousand dollars, that grant's going away. So, the idea is to pull this group of people onto the general budget, which is part of what we're talking about in terms of the general fund, general budget, operating budget. So, that money will not be there fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four to pay these folks. So, this here is head count addition to the general budget. Okay?
So, and, and I know Todd's explaining this, and I just want to make sure we, we have a clear understanding. This is not a recommendation to increase staff. When we talk about staff, we might talk about recommendations to increase staff. We're talking about maintaining current staff. So, we have, we're employing X number of staff members within the district. Eight of them are being paid by a grant, that they've been paid on that grant for the past two years. If we do not want to eliminate any staff, the board needs to assume that cost. So, that's why it's included in this.
What, do you know, offhand, can you provide those positions?
We will provide only global staff.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. The next line item is collectively all of our benefits. So, last year, in the health insurance line, which I presented at every particular meeting going, in terms of how we were, what the run rate was, we're basically underfunded in the health insurance line of about seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Okay? This year, uh, we're seeing an ever-growing amount of health insurance needs. I believe it was last month I reported out, uh, nine hundred thousand was the spend. I just saw another one come through from Smith Brothers just, uh, yesterday for over a million. So, our health insurance is growing month to month. So, what I did for our budget here, uh, we have increases, of course, in dental and, uh, other vision, long-term, et cetera. But the bulk work of this million eighty-three, four hundred and twelve dollars is a health insurance increase. We are not alone. City of Shelton is also majorly underfunded on the health insurance line. And my best guess is that there's going to be a lot of discussions at City Hall as to how much that brings up. So, I'm not, when I did my calculations, it's not. So I'm not, when I did my calculations, it's not like I'm saying this plus next year. I'm just trying to say, hey, this is what we need to catch up for this year. So, and hoping that things mod- moderate out and go flat next year. So again, most of this million plus is just an increase to the health insurance line based on our run rate, based on what we're seeing, based on feedback from the Smith Brothers. Again, also, City Hall is looking at a major shortfall in their health insurance line. So my guess is both City Hall as well as we will be discussing health insurance quite a bit.
And, and that could be a potential area of reducing this number on the bottom if City Hall is willing to take on some of that. You know, as we did, where we mitigated our past budget. You know, so, so this is where the discussions need to take place. So we, but that's why we want to be transparent about what our obligations are.
Exactly. Okay, the next one, this is the same as last year. I had a line in tuition. We send children out to different schools. And we had increased last year. I just basically took the same increase percentage-wise and did it again this year. So this is for CES, for ACEs, et cetera. So we're looking at three hundred ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and six dollars. Okay? Electricity. Electricity, we did have, uh, overspend last year, more usage. Again, we were back in school full-time compared to the COVID years. So we, we did overspend about eighty-three thousand for just electricity alone. Plus, we're looking at increase in delivery costs that PIRA agreed to and was announced around December timeframe. So I'm trying to best grab, capture that percentage, which is a little bit unknown. So in this number is using what our overage was from last fiscal year, plus also a piece to cover the yet-to-be-determined extra spend for the new delivery costs. Okay, so that's twofold for electric line. Okay, natural gas. Uh, I had mentioned that Paul Hiller and I worked diligently trying to find options as natural gas prices exploded by two hundred percent. Our contract came up and what happened was we only had two options. So we went with the option where the price went up a hundred and twenty-five percent. So we locked in for the year. Roundabout next to August, September, we'll be looking to see what we can do about the next contract. The previous contract was a three-year contract and that was done when everything slowed down. So we had really good pricing, while then unfortunately the war broke out. Natural gas prices spiked. We only had two options, plus two hundred percent or plus one twenty-five. So basically, we're looking at just on the natural gas line, an addition of four hundred and seven thousand dollars. I made sure to put it on there so everybody knows that's the price, that's the price adder, so it's very clear for everybody. Okay. The next line item, uh, as Ken mentioned, the ARP grant only really had three options of money to spend. That was people, supplies, instructional. So for the past year, we have purchased, uh, wit and wisdom workbooks, Eureka workbooks, math manipulatives for a hundred thousand dollars. Those need to be replaced every year. And so same concept as the staff off of the ARP grant expiration. We're looking at a hundred thousand dollars to come on the general fund because the ARP grant will not be there. So to repeat, this hundred thousand dollars is to cover wit and wisdom workbooks, Eureka workbooks, and other math manipulatives. Next line item, software. Again, the ARP grant was only allowed certain few things. So we did buy instructional software, wit and wisdom software, NWEA, iXL, which the kids absolutely love, and Eureka Math. So the ARP grant is not going to be there to pay for it again for this new upcoming budget here. So the ask is to transfer that from what was ARP, onto the general fund for three hundred and seven thousand dollars.
So if, if the board remembers, um, last year's budget process, they saw a dramatic decrease in the teaching and learning item from the general budget. And we presented that to make budget because we informed the board that we were going to supplement that with the ARP grant. So here we are now, the ARP grant money's gone, so now we have to replace all that money to sustain our current delivery of instruction.
The next one's kind of very easy to, uh, to communicate. Going into the COVID years, John Calhoun's custodial budget was cut tremendously. The kids weren't in school, they weren't using, using as much, uh, hand soap, paper towel, et cetera.
Well, with that, Todd, I also want to say, we also, at the, at the onsite of the pandemic, had grant money given specifically for cleaning supplies. So we, we were able to supplement. And, and that also, that's not ARP money, but that was grant money that we used to pay for the soaps and the, you know, the, the hand washes and all that stuff because of the pandemic.
Ken stole my thunder. So as Ken just mentioned, yes, we had received other government monies to make sure hand sanitation and such was really ramped up to help avoid some of the disease, uh, transmission, et cetera. So at that time, the custodial line item was cut because it was offset by grant money. Uh, so this year, we don't have that grant money in our current budget. And John has communicated to Carol, Ken, and I that he is having a shortfall this year and is going to do everything he can to make it to the end of school year. But it is rather tough. So without John being here, he would say, uh, team, we absolutely need to restore a hundred fifty thousand dollars to my budget because I need more hand towels, I need more soap, I need some more cleaners. Okay?
And John can speak more to that next week because he'll be here on his book.
Yes. And then now the next two line items are basically edicts, mandates. So John has absolutely got to be the state of Connecticut asbestos plan need. So this is a cost that he's going to have to incur no matter what. The state asks us to do it and requires us to do it. So he's going to be doing this, uh, in the new school year.
Yeah, this asbestos plan is required by state law every three years. This is just year three. So this is the time that's coming up. It's not something that we're going to see in next year's budget, but this is what it's, the time where we have to make sure that we appropriate funds for it.
And then the next item is John has other contractual increases too for some of the services that he, that he uses, as well as the other state mandates. There's one example for, uh, HVAC. He has to do some HVAC inspection work in the new year. So that's also incorporated to this line for twenty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. These again are mandates, they must be done. Okay? The next line, uh, I've had some conversations with the city and I'm going to need some help from our team here. Uh, I put in a zero increase because that's kind of where we've been talking on the city bus transportation department. Uh, for the past two or three years, it's been three point one five million. So I have that at the very bottom there grayed out. So I'm assuming that that's going to remain the same for this year, that we're going to stay at another three point one five million for our city bus, uh, contract for the new fiscal year. So when you add all these parts and pieces together of all these lines, there comes the financial waterfall. You'll see that just to keep things even with the one asterisk of special ed for budget three, as of what you have here before you, just like we did a year ago, you're looking at a dollar increase of five million, eleven thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars for a percent year-over-year increase for these items of six point six eight percent.
So, um, before we open up to questions, I just want to kind of wrap up what Todd said and said, you know. Um, so over the course of the next five workshops, administration will be presenting item by item and itemizing these, these areas, having directors who, who oversee these departments speak specifically to it, but also presenting potential areas where we can possibly do reductions to maintain this budget. So, you know, uh, I'm hoping that we can work this number down some, um, but then we will have to talk about what we want to do for improvements for the school system. Because although we can, you know, work in every effort to reduce that, that doesn't mean that we would be making any improvements or advancements to the school system. You know, this board did hear from, um, parent groups at the board talking about class sizes, those particular pieces. If we are looking to maintain teachers or even reduce class sizes, that would be salary increases that we'll have to talk about, um, when we get to that. Um, and the idea that if we were to not maintain current services, the two major areas that will be affected is class sizes and curriculum offerings. So what we're offering our kids and the sizes of the classes that they're in. You know, eighty-five percent, we'll get, how I say this, of our budget is made up of salaries. So if we need to reduce by the millions, the only way we're going to do that is by reducing staff. Um, we haven't laid off staff. Uh, I understand the obligation and the luxury that we had with the federal grant money. Um, I would not like to lay off a single staff person, but this is going to be a collaborative effort that we're going to have to do at the board. I, I want to just, just end on, on the idea that, you know, as I speak to PTOS, as I speak to parent groups, as I walk around the district, I speak to staff, you know, I often hear the questions, well, why can't we do this? Or why don't we do this anymore? And, and a lot of the answers to these questions are simply fiscal. You know, we don't do this anymore because we don't have the money to sustain that. We're not doing this like another school district because we don't have the money to sustain it. So I think there needs to be a real reflection of what we're doing, um, as a board and what we want for our school system that if we want certain aspects for our school system, we have to be willing to pay for it. Otherwise, we as administration, our job is to work within our means. We will provide the best education and school system we can on the funding allocations that we receive. With that said, that's all the presentations for tonight, Madam Chair. I will yield back to you and if there's any questions.
I think we better make that six dollars each to tip. Carol, I just want, um, we have no negotiations coming up or we finished it, we do?
We do. Um, so.
Well, it would be for the following year, correct?
So we have two contracts that end June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, PIRA Professional. And I've received a communication from their business representative, Rob Montori, asking for information and to begin the negotiation process. And then the other contract that is set to expire this year on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three is our, uh, engineer's contract, which is our custodians, maintenance, and security personnel. So there are two contracts that will expire in June.
Okay, so they will expire, so that means that salary, there will be salary increases as part of this budget, correct?
If that's what's negotiated.
I mean.
Yes. Um, I, I would say that the biggest factor in our negotiations has been inflation. So I would anticipate that, yes, the union will ask for, um, raises.
We will be negotiating the administrator's contract this year as well, but it's the last year of the administrative contract. It'll go into effect the year after that.
Do we know there's a placeholder? Do we put it, that's what?
I think the administrators are twenty twenty-four.
That's what Ken said.
Yeah. Now, next year's their last year, so we're going to have.
Twenty-three, right. So, but it does, it expires next year. Twenty twenty-four, so.
Yeah, that's where the folks will be negotiating their contract.
Probably next year.
Next year, correct?
Yes, so I'm talking about, we've been, so the requests, yes, our requests are right now. Administrators will most likely prior, be prior to twenty twenty-four.
So our, our, Todd, are you going to include some type of placeholder for, for a possible negotiation? That might have to be added to this?
Yes, we talked about that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions?
Yes. This obviously includes bringing paid participants.
This would mean that paid participants does return. Yes. Unless the city offers again to waive that. Yep.
Or give us what we asked for in our budget. Yeah. And, and as far as the health insurance increase, I was just looking at some of the numbers. So with the increase you're proposing, it would be seven hundred thirty-five thousand a month. Is that going to be enough?
That's about, so right now, in here, out of, uh, one million eighty-three, I have approximately seven seventy-five to eight hundred as an adder for the health insurance for the new year to where we are now, just to get us to about even.
So that's what you, you, you got for numbers was seven seventy-eight a month? Okay. Is that going to be enough?
It's hard to tell. It really is because like watching the last two, I would never thought we'd been over nine hundred, now we're over a million. You know, and it's not flat even usage, so we do kind of get sometimes a, like a bell-shaped curve on that. So it's, we're going to have a, we're going to have a meeting with Smith Brothers next month. They give us a really good assessment where they go through and do some statistical analysis. And they are a little bit more than subject matter experts to give us feedback. So like right now, based on where I'm doing the math, I'm just trying to get us to about even and not have that shortage. But if things keep climbing, I don't have any, I don't have any, uh, growth in healthcare spend on that number.
Yeah, because I'm looking, you know, that was our biggest, one of our bigger troubled areas last year was we've been seven hundred thousand in the red.
Exactly. Yes.
Yeah, just a question I had too, Todd. So we're self-insured and obviously the situation had asked to dramatically affect what we try to have no control over those costs. Is there, what you would consider, uh, uh, another more traditional or a real positive thing where we're not self-insured?
That is a great question. I know I've talked with other, uh, members in CASBO at other different districts. Certain plans have certain positives, certain negatives. Our plan has certain positives, certain negatives. So that would end up probably being, uh, some sort of community analysis to go through to really figure out if there's something better or brighter than where we are now. And it's, the grass is always greener. You know what I'm saying? Because I've heard folks on a traditional healthcare plan.
They go up too.
Yeah. And they're, they're like, they say to me, you guys are so lucky you're self-insured. And if you're self-insured, say, you guys are so lucky you're on, you're on the traditional.
If you're fully insured, the percentage of increase is going to be, uh, is going to be rap- more rapid.
And, and I will say, Carol, um, in my conversations with superintendents, there is a trend to go to self-insurance. Thinking that they're going to save money.
Yes.
Todd, um, I, do you think, uh, with this electricity? Do you, you know, um, I, I just heard from a friend who got their electric bill and everybody is under the assumption it's going, going to be eighty or eighty-five dollars a month more. Well, her, her bill was like, her regular bill at this time would have been two hundred and something. And she got a bill, her, her electric bill was for four hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Is that UI or Eversource?
I'm not sure.
Eversource, I think the percentage of increase is going to be more than UI. Yeah.
What I'm just saying is, do you think that that isn't, is, is a sufficient amount to put in for utilities?
So during our workshop here, that's another, that was an item that I would like to talk yet again. I've got phone calls into the UI, into our, into our contacts. I haven't heard back from them, but I'm trying to at least start with a decent number. We may have to increase that a little bit more because it's, it's kind of like the natural gas. I know we negotiate a hundred and twenty-five percent increase, but until you actually get some bills to see how to, to measure that out, it's, it's not real until it becomes real. So, but no, your, your point is very well taken.
I'm just, I'm just concerned because, well, I, I, I read that in the paper that the legislators are, are trying to work out something and, uh, you know, I'm just thinking how this, maybe that money would be better spent on our kids than, than electricity. Maybe we could go back to the olden days, you know, like at Sturgisville with candlelight.
Use candles?
Make your own candles, et cetera, et cetera.
And maybe we could put little fireplaces.
I always think, I always think, thinking, you know, that at some point, because we're at the mercy of gas and electricity, when is it worth looking into geothermal for heat? When is it worth looking at solar? I mean, um, there's been a whole. And I, you know, as a homeowner, I'm looking at the same thing.
And that's why, uh, the good thing is between the city, uh, John, myself, we were working with quite a bit with Eversource for the grant. So that's going to work to convert Long Hill from liquid propane to natural gas. You have a constant flow of gas to the school and we're not at the mercy of deliveries of LPG every couple of days. And so, um, then we can also work the contract for longer. So that's one thing that, again, with Paul Hiller, with John Calhoun, myself, that's why we jumped on that. And it was a, uh, grant that basically is paying for the pipeline, the digging, and conversion from the street to the back of the school. We'll have a little plumbing and changes in terms of the actual boilers, but it's minimal expense. But the great thing is we get away from the deliveries. And what happens, well, we don't have a delivery also, and Ken's got to cancel school because we don't have LPG. Turn on the heat, we don't want that.
I think your point, you know, with geothermal, you have to convert it to something else, um, that is less expensive. Yeah. And how much would that cost?
Well, I, I know, I've worked on long system and years, long grid zone power.
Yes, yes, it does.
And everlast.
I think there's like two municipalities in the state that operate that. I think there's only two municipalities in the state that operate that way. Oh, absolutely, and we're hoping that maybe this year that grant comes around again to convert another school from LPG to natural gas. Cause again, we'll have a steady flow of natural gas. We can then, as we have higher usage, we can then work to negotiate better pricing on the lock again. So no, it's, it's part of the, part of the discussion.
Thank you, Carl.
Sure.
Yes, question, um, I'm just putting these areas into little baskets on what day we're gonna talk about them. What day would you consider we're gonna talk about tuition, is that going to fall under which budget workshop day?
Special education.
Special education, right, okay. And then, um, instructional supplies and software is gonna be teaching and learning?
That's correct.
Yes.
Yeah, obviously custodial is pretty self-explanatory, staff is self-explanatory, what about benefits? What day, would you put that on there?
Well, that's a staffing issue.
Is it, you'll put that on our stat, you'll talk about it then? Just so that I know, like God forbid, you know, just if I wanna market. So if I have questions in advance, I could think about it, okay, that's it. Any, any other questions?
I have four questions, uh, for the administration. Um, the first is, could you supply us, obviously either next meeting or via email? Um, and you, you probably know this one right off the top of your head, what's our current ECS reimbursement? Not the NBR, but the amount we're receiving.
Access cost?
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
So you have that, I don't have the number on, on-
At least what the state's reimbursing us for.
So, I don't wanna be misquoted.
That happens on an annual basis and, uh, it's based on student population. There's a lot of confidential data that gets aggregated and put up into a state website. The state then does the calculations and they'll come up with a number.
What was it last year? I'm aware of the process.
Okay, uh, one million five hundred thirty-four thousand on-
One million?
One million five hundred thirty-four thousand rounded, I don't have the exact dollar amount on my head.
Do you expect that number to increase or decrease or remain the same?
Well, here's where it gets really interesting. Uh, I've mentioned in previous board meetings, there's a state of Connecticut budget line item for ECS. That number has not changed in at least five years. And so every town, every city, all hundred sixty-seven of us are fighting for those dollars. So what I do from a conservative prudent perspective is I take last year's number and I roll it into the new budget, hoping that we'll get the same or more. If we get less, then we have a conversation. So at the end of the day, it depends on how the state works. It depends on the data, it depends on the children and all that. So in short, there's no easy answer to your question.
But Todd, that number does, does like an increase from what it just was, just recently?
Yes, yes, yep, we, we've been fortunate, we've gotten a little bit more money, our, our trend line is more ECS year over year. But again, when I go to CASBO meetings, we all know it's the same total dollar amount, but it's getting divvied up throughout more districts and more children.
My second question for you, as you list under ARP grants expansion, is there a nu- a number of positions that are associated if, uh, with the expiration of this grant that will be affected?
Eight.
And those eight positions, uh, can you give me a little bit more explanation as to what positions those are?
We're gonna present those eight positions when we do staff them. We're gonna have a listing of those exact positions and what schools they're working in.
That's perfect, thank you, Ken. Uh, my third question is, you may know this number off, right off the top of your head, but if you don't, it's okay. Are, are, are spending per student compared to the other members in our DIRD, uh, do you know that dollar amount?
I have it in last year's budget book. It will then be, um, there's a whole section, thank you, David.
I'll take a look at it.
There's a whole section that I have in there for, and then I'll say we have the ranking. There's a hundred sixty-seven in school districts in the state and the per spend child and shelter were one sixty-four out of one sixty-seven.
Okay, that's, it's a good number to know and then, you know, us calculating based off of this budget where we may fall in that. Uh, my last question for you, uh, is the following is, do we have any of our schools currently under, uh, taking a look at solar for electricity?
Could you repeat that question?
Do you have any of our schools that are currently on, in solar or looking at adding solar to our school district to offset electricity?
You mean for us here at Shelton?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, no, no, no projects that I know of that add solar here.
We have-
Right now, we do have solar on one of the schools, but there's no new projects coming.
Okay.
We're right now, we've been focusing on trying to get Long Hill converted from LPG to natural gas.
I'm good, Madam Chair, thank you.
Don't we have solar panels on the Long Hill, just one, just one small?
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
I'd be interested also to know who's in our DIRD, you know, what they, uh, cost grant, or not cost grant, how much we spend per student. So what other, what other districts are, are included in it?
We can provide the DIRD list and I'll try to get the, the per pupil expenditure.
I don't know the others, but Rocky Hill, those are all in my DIRD.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll provide a DIRD list and then I will attempt to get the per, per pupil expenditure for those.
Milford is probably the closest to us, yeah.
Just, just a reminder, when you go to do the DIRD, it's our school system, our income service is provided by the city to not include it. So we have to factor that in. So when you go from one sixty, you cut to one sixty-four, one sixty-seven, our income service, such as, like, uh, other districts will include your gas kind of things, that thing that sort of did with the city, those four levels. I just have a couple, maybe one. The non, my non-privileged account, the non-privileged account, is that included in this budget? Is that included in the GAGA?
The benefits here?
Yeah.
So what exactly is the question, Jim?
Four hundred thousand dollars that we rolled over.
Oh, you're talking about what the Board of Alderman had covered us?
The week that we had saved and we did that.
Oh, from a year and a half ago?
Yeah.
That, uh, what was that, two seventy-eight?
Are you basing it off of that, like upon that?
No, that's two completely separate things.
So you, so you spent that, you didn't ask anything for this?
No, all, all this is, is the cost adders, this is the projected cost adders. So that's two seventy-eight from like a year and a half ago, that's a year and a half ago, that's not incorporated here.
So that's still good for the budget?
No, no, these are just cost adders.
So it's another two seventy-eight?
The city has it.
So it's another two seventy-eight. If you didn't add it, you'd spend it, it's additional to that. I just wanna be quick, but I'll figure it out later. The pay for play, you said it would be, uh, is included in this?
No, paid to particip- paid to participate, just to be clear for everybody, paid to participate is not in this one sheet financial walk. Uh, the question before was, what is the thought for paid to participate for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four? We are collectively under the assumption that we're going back to the way it was where the parents will pay three hundred or two fifty or three and a quarter, unless the city repeats, um, the offering that they did for this current fiscal year to buy the helmets and the reconditioning.
And then we're still the cost of the candy that the city just purchased. So you're saying that it's not in this budget?
Paid to participate is not in this discussion here. Right now, uh, just for everybody, just to be clear.
No, Jim, it, it, it's included in the, in the, in the top. I mean, that, it, that-
It's in the budget.
Yeah, it's in the budget.
This is just things that aren't currently in our budget that we're adding.
Well, I was looking at the way, I thought you framed the question, but-
Well, a- actually, why would it be in the budget though? If the city paper or-
The city paper.
But if parents pay for it, we're not gonna-
So there's-
The non-ful- the, the non-ful positions that we had in this budget, the money that we allocated to that, that's in this budget, right, Ken? Even the non-ful positions, correct?
I believe all of them.
Even the what positions?
Even the positions that weren't filled, they're, it's in this budget, right?
All of our positions are filled.
It's in this bottom line.
All of our positions are filled.
Not, they weren't all year.
Well, all of our, all of our teacher positions have been filled all year, yes. And then the board approved the addition of five new positions and those positions are filled as well. So all of our positions are filled.
Okay, so we had all our per professional positions were filled?
As of today, they're all filled.
Okay, as of today, okay. So that money allocated is in this budget, is in this line item. So is it, is it a hundred percent for the year or is it just seventy-five percent?
No.
This is already July, this is January.
So our position, our budget is-
September, right, where do we end? Okay, we'll, we'll figure that out when we can, when we come to that.
Our budget is a position controlled budget, so when we budget for our salary lines, it's based on the number of positions that we are budgeted for. So for example, our para-professional line is budgeted for X amount of para-professionals. Now, within that line, at the end of the budget year, if we haven't filled all of our positions, it would be in the black. But that's not the case.
That's okay.
So it's not, we don't budget on, we don't-
I just wanna know if it ends in seven five million.
All of the-
It's either yes or no, it is or it isn't?
I, I don't under, I can't answer it that way, I can answer it-
Okay, okay, we'll get to it when we get down to it.
But I would say yes, I think what he's about to get at, I would say, yes, all of the positions are budgeted whether we use them or not.
All of our positions, Amy, Mrs. Romano is correct, she's answering your question. All of the positions that we are budgeting for are in this budget that you see on that paper right now.
For a full year.
I just wanna be clear-
For a full year, yes.
Okay, for the full year, tutors, everything.
Yep.
Okay. It's all enlarged enough. That's gonna be interesting.
I think you're trying to trip me up with your questions, but I think they're still answered.
You say, you say, you think I'm still answering?
No, I said, I definitely did not say that.
Hey, Jim, Costco is having a special on hearing aids. That's what I told him.
Ninety-nine dollars for two pair?
Are there any other questions? Uh, I know, most men do. Any other, any other questions?
This is probably the principal one, next Wednesday.
Yes.
What, I, I can't remember the schedule, I remember at four o'clock, is that four o'clock is our coffee, uh, coffee with the superintendent? Which is never looking-
Is finance first or?
And then finances, Wednesday, and then, then the budget works out. And that's why we moved it from Thursday, so we have one consec- one after one now.
Here, here's my last question, I'm sorry, just one more.
Wait a minute.
Yeah.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I'm sure.
It's only one more. All right.
So Todd, I know in our finance, monthly finance meetings, we were due to get a projection for how much we were gonna be over budget this year.
Yes.
So I'm assuming, I'm thinking that projection of what you think we're gonna be over budget this year, which is our starting point for ministry, that's part of it?
Part of it, yes. But they, sped is not, sped is not, but I, I tried to cover the health insurance and utilities, but there will be more. So this is contractual, and again, we know healthcare has been under seventy-three percent.
No, he's talking about our budget being over spent.
And health. Correct, yeah. We haven't started talking about sped yet. It's not a simple answer. No, no, it's not, no. This year is contractual obligations plus rubber rate increases, price increases, so like we know natural gas is on a hundred twenty-five percent. We know, uh, electricity's going up, okay? Also, I looked at where we had spent last year, are these items to incorporate that in? For these, for these items, for these items. Oh yeah, it's going up. If you're asking me, is it higher than six point five, yes.
All right, that was my last question.
Okay, did you get an answer? Did you get your answer?
I did, thank you.
She didn't ask that, Jim.
I didn't say anything.
She didn't say anything, so, listen.
I said, Carl got you started, thanks a lot.
All right, okay. Any other questions? Any other questions, once, twice, three times, no other questions, we're adjourned. Yes, thank you everyone.
Spread the word.
Yes, spread the word, money, 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 we need money.
Jim, that's it, we're done.